I'd like to call the Tuesday, November 14th School Board Meeting to Order. Madam Clerk, can you take attendance, please?
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. Hyrens.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Excellent. The first item on our agenda is to convene into closed session. I'm not sure whose computer's working.
My computer.
All right. Ms. Egan, can you read us in to closed session?
I move that the Stafford County School Board convene in a closed meeting, consider or discuss a probable litigation matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7 of the Virginia Code and to consider or discuss legal advice pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A8 of the Virginia Code.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I just have a question, Madam Chairman. We have a closed session. I notice we have a closed session at item number 1601. If there's time, since we have an hour, could we include that in the closed session so perhaps we wouldn't have to reconvene?
That's good. I mean...
I have been told by Ms. Boatwright that your... this session will take pretty much the entire hour. I don't know if that's changed.
Well, just in case it doesn't, doesn't... we can always suspend it and then go back to it.
Do I have to read it?
No, I would just say, and...
To amend it.
Let's amend it to include the...
Pursuant to the...
If there is sufficient time to consider three personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption.
Okay.
At Section 2.237...
Okay, I'll amend the first motion to include in such convened, closed meeting, we may discuss three personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Okay, I just have one question. I know Mrs. Hazard said three, but the 1601 says two.
This one here says three.
The amendment one.
Oh, they amend... oh, it's changed from this.
I'm just reading it from here, too. It just has amended.
I'm reading yesterday's paper.
Yep. That's right. All right.
Three.
As amended, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we are in closed session.
Just in case.
The board is coming out of closed session for our evening meeting. We will be reconvening in closed session at the end of the meeting. So at this time, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if you'll please rise, face the flag as it is presented by Colonel Colonial Forge, JROTC color guard.
Sir, permission, Colonel, to present colors.
Permission, ready.
Thank you, sir. Colors, present. Arms.
This allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Colors, order. Arms. Right. Face. Forward. March.
All right, you all may be seated. I would like to thank our color guard this evening with our cadets Kimball, Regaling, Sayag, Pinghum, Gruber, Newell, Schwartz, and Captain James Louts... Louts. And thank you very much for that this evening. Moving on, we will go on to our approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I do have something to change. Request and consent.
Okay.
There is 1207, approve the new capital joint improvement progress and consent. I do consent to attachment 1, 2, and 3, as that was briefed to the board fully weeks ago as part of the capital improvement process, but the attachment 4 and attachment 5 were developed just recently and briefed to the Technical Review Committee just on November 6 last week. So I think they need to be pulled out, and then what we'll do is when the Technical Review Committee meets on Monday and has a better idea of the racking and stacking, and we can explain to the public what's going on.
You need Oversight Committee? Technical Review Committee?
Technical Review Committee briefing to the Oversight Committee. Right. And so we can pull that back out for the December 12th or even a January work session and talk a little bit about that for the whole board and go through it.
So we would amend item 12.07 to include attachments 1, 2, and 3, deleting attachment 4 and 5. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right. Moving those to just a December 12th or whenever the next... and then we'll have more information as well with that from the Monday's meeting.
Okay.
What's Monday?
Monday, we're having our second Oversight Committee meeting with the Board of Supervisors, the joint.
Fab.
Yeah, Fab C. It's called the Oversight Committee, as Mr. Hyrens said.
Okay. I mean, is that...
Yes.
Is that all right? Okay. So a motion to approve the agenda with 12.07 deleting attachments 4 and 5, leaving it on for consent?
Yes, leaving 1207 on for consent minus...
Just trying to clarify.
Yeah, minus 4 and 5. Yes.
Okay.
Second. Second.
It's partly the approval of the agenda. The motion maker accepts it.
So I do... well, since he's taking it out, I would like to say something if we have an opportunity to speak before we accept it.
Okay, so why don't we pull 12.07 off of consent and put it into action?
She can pull it off of consent. Yeah.
I'll pull it off consent, but are we going to be able to opine on this in December?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. There's going to be more information in December.
Right. Well, we're keeping the rest of it on minus those two.
Right, but this is the first time 4 and 5 has been seen by this board, so we shouldn't be...
But if we're passing the...
Process.
Process. 12.07 process.
Right.
Is it going to be an action next time?
I don't know what the...
It needs to be an action tonight.
Tonight for the process, which is 1, 2, and 3?
One, two, and three.
We've seen that.
Why don't we pull the whole item off and put it under action, and then we can have the discussion when it's under action?
Yes.
That's fine.
Doesn't matter to me.
I mean, that way you can discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, so let... okay, so the motion, I believe, now on the table is to approve the agenda, moving 12.07 to action, removing it from consent. How about we do that way, then?
Sure.
All right. Is there a... do you...
Okay, I'm a little bit confused. Wasn't this originally on for information?
No.
It's on consent agenda for approval.
It was on consent because this was brought previously. Unfortunately, it never got back onto the agenda as an approval item, and this process, we all agreed to it, so did the Board of Supervisors, but I guess when going back through the meeting minutes, when we were looking for something, we did not find the approval of this board, of this process, which we all agreed to in two committees. I think we should have a formal vote on this process.
Okay.
So that's what this was meant to do.
Exactly.
But I agree that the two attachments should not...
I agree with everything you said, minus just the 4 and 5 just came up last week, so I want to pull those back out so that we can talk about it at a later date in depth.
Correct. All right, so are we moving it from consent to action? So everybody needs... would like to talk about it again, which is fine. I just would like to know where we're putting it.
Well, my request still stands. Just I'll approve the agenda, just remove 4 and 5. We don't have to talk about it again.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'll address it in member comments. How about that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. All right. So does everybody know what we're voting on? Approval of the agenda with 12.07 remaining as a consent item, but removing attachments 4 and 5?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is there a...
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Agenda is approved. So next, we will go on to our special presentations. We'd like to welcome this evening... I would like Ms. Manya Rayner to come up if she will introduce. She serves as our member for Stafford County Public Schools on our Germana Community College Board, and I'm going to give her the honor of introducing our special guest.
Thank you very much. Good evening. After holding various positions with the Colorado Department of Higher Education, the Minnesota State Colleges and University System, and the Community Colleges of Spokane, Dr. Janet Gulickson has joined us at Germana Community College. Prior to Germana, she served as the president for the Spokane Falls Community College for five years. She has also held a variety of other key positions over her career, including interim president, interim provost, executive vice president, vice president for academic and student affairs, faculty member, and as a consultant in the areas of strategic planning, college foundation board development, student learning assessment, and organizational change. Dr. Gulickson holds a doctorate of higher education degree from the University of Minnesota and a master of science degree in rural sociology from South Dakota State University. I am delighted to introduce to you tonight our new Germana Community College President, Dr. Janet Gulickson.
Thank you, Manya. What a privilege it is to have Ms. Rayner on our board. I know that many of you know her, and she... we were just talking about our similarities, which include, to the point, not a lot of flower language in "Let's Get It Done." So I won't take much of your time tonight, but I do want to point out a few things. First, I want to thank you. Stafford County and the Stafford School System has been a great supporter for Germana students. We have a wonderful relationship. You have, and you probably know this, but you have an outstanding superintendent. You are very lucky to have someone with his expertise, his knowledge, and his passion. And I also believe strongly that he has my same ideal, which is we serve all students. And I thank you, Dr. Benson. I brought a little material for you tonight because I think going to K-12 systems, I should have a handout. I really do. So if you look in the folder that I gave you, and you'll see a couple pieces of information. On the left side of the folder, there is information about our dual enrollment programs, and Stafford Public Schools is very active in our dual enrollment program, and we're very happy to have that relationship. We would like to expand it. We've actually talked about how we strengthen the pipeline between higher education and Stafford schools, and I think within the next... as soon as I get my feet a little wetter, we'll work harder and stronger on that, all the way to career and university. On the right side, you will see just some basic information about Germana. I'd like you to take out the little booklet, if you would, and just turn to the first page where I look in my photo very much like my mother. And if you look on the right-hand side of the page, what I'm most proud of is the variety of programming that Germana Community College offers. I also would like to tell you thank you because we have 2,800 students from Stafford County as part of our 10,000 student enrollment. You are the second highest provider county for our students. At our local Stafford Center, we serve about... currently, we have about over 500 students. You may be interested to know that we are expanding our service capabilities, and in the spring, starting in the summer, we are launching a much larger site, complete with biology labs, chemistry labs, and physics labs out near the hospital. We are very excited about that. We'll occupy about 15,000 square feet of space. We plan to focus on offering the entire associate's degree there so students never have to go south or north. We also plan to offer cybersecurity as well as business, and we are really exploring health programs and what we can do, particularly as making career ladders for health students. And so watch for that in the spring. We will invite all of you. We are very excited about what we're going to be able to do, and we really need... I need to give a shout out to the Hart family in this community. They have been outstanding in helping us get that facility together. The third thing I'd like to point out is on the next page of that, and that is really the kinds of opportunities we offer, and you'll see on the left page there, dual enrollment. Our dual enrollment is a very important way for students to get high school, college/college classes and to be able to progress and graduate, we hope, earlier in their four-year or two-year experience, as well as a little less debt. And that is extremely important in these days for our students, particularly for students who want to go on to graduate school where they will incur debt. We always say to families, keep the first two years less expensive, about a third of what a university costs, transfer then to a university, and help their students when they're in graduate school. The last thing I want to say is that we believe, as a servant to Stafford, that we work for you, and that's an attitude that we're trying to really instill in our culture, that together there's enough educational need in this community for all of us to benefit and all of us to share resources to expand. So I invite you, my card is there, and I'm very serious about this. If you run into any issues, if you have any ideas, if you have anything that you think Germana should be doing or should be doing better or should stop doing, I really invite you to talk to me directly or our great board representative. I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. Very excited to be here. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I will.
Thank you. Any questions from board, or...
No, I just wanted to say thank you for coming in. Germana's a big part of our community, and we've got a new face here. Welcome, welcome to Stafford and Fredericksburg, but thank you for coming in and educating everybody and those at home that are watching on some of the new opportunities. So thanks.
My pleasure.
And thanks, Manya.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Madam Chair. All right, next, we will be going on to our awards and recognitions. I'd like to welcome to the podium Greg Daniel, our Principal of Colonial Forge High School, who will present our awards. I recognize these people.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Benson. I am pleased to announce that the Colonial Forge High School Music Department, with Directors Robert Gillette, Barbara Perry, Deborah Tripp, has received the Support Music Merit Award from the National Association for the Music Merchants Foundation, based out of Carlsbad, California, for the 2017 school year. This award recognizes Colonial Forge High School Music Department for their commitment to music education and is a school-only award as part of the Best Communities for Music Education Program. Ninety-two schools received this recognition throughout the country for the Support Music Merit Award. The National Association of Music Merchants Foundation and Virginia Senator Mark Warner sent letters to the school in recognition of this award. Colonial Forge is currently applying to be recognized for the Support Music Award for 2018. Again, like to offer congratulations to our directors and the entire Colonial Forge Music Department.
You didn't sing your...
All right, at this time, then, we will be moving on to our staff reports. We will be starting with our high school class size report. And let's see. I believe Mrs. Kale is going to be our presenter with support.
Presenter with support. That is correct. We need support now, just a second.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Benson. I stand before you tonight to present you Stafford County Public Schools 2017-2018 High School Class Size Report. Stafford County Public Schools High School Class Size Report is based on the student enrollment in core and elective classes as of September 30th, 2017. The following high school information is included: average class size for each school, frequency of class sizes, and school comparison by number of students in each class. Throughout this presentation, it is important for you to view our current core and collective class sizes through the lens of the school administrators and scheduling staff. As they attempt to balance the needs of students and capabilities of their staff, the reality is that creating and balancing schedules is a complex process and requires a focus of continuous improvement. Please keep in mind our school administrators strive to meet the varying needs of all of our students' scheduling requests. The scheduling process is complicated by numerous singleton classes and diverse program requirements. For example, courses only offered once to make sure students have the opportunity to participate in the upper levels of world language, CTE, JROTC, AP, CGS, DE, and IB. We will begin with a core class comparison. These courses include English, mathematics, social studies, science, and world language. Based on the average daily membership as of September 30th, 2017, the total number of high school students was 9,471. We had an increase of 145 high school students compared to last year. The average division core class size is 23.3, ranging from 23.2 at Stafford High School to 24.4 in Mountain View High School. The average high school core class size of 23.8 in 2017 to 2018 is an increase of 1.3 compared to 22.5 in 2016-2017. Please note that the totals do not include an additional FTE provided to Mountain View High School to cover English and social studies. The FTE will be utilized second semester. This chart displays class span data. There are 421 classes with 20 or fewer students, ranging from 72 at Burke Point High School to 103 at Colonial Forge High School. The number of classes with 20 or fewer students have increased by 23 classes when compared to last year. There are 908 classes with 21 to 27 students, ranging from 131 at Mountain View High School to 220 at Stafford High School. The number of classes with 21 to 27 students decreased by one class when compared to 2016-2017. There are 442 classes with 28 or more students, ranging from 64 at Stafford High School to 118 in Mountain View High School. The number of classes with 28 or more decreased by five classes when compared to last year and by 66 classes from 2015-2016. This graph displays the majority of our classes have 21 to 27 students, which are optimal class size. The core comparison relative frequency chart displays a breakdown of the class span data on the previous slide. There's an increase of nine classes with 12 or fewer students when compared to last year. Please note the classes with 12 or fewer students can be broken down as follows: 12 world language classes, 12 classes designed to have lower enrollment, such as algebra Part 1, Part 2, geometry Part 1, Part 2, et cetera; 12 AP classes, including three Commonwealth Governor School classes; 11 IB classes; six Commonwealth Governor School classes, non-AP; three math classes; and one DE class. Please note that next year, Mr. Nichols and I will be requesting notification and reason for classes below a certain threshold, such as 12 and below. Class sizes with 12 or fewer represent 3.2% of the total number of division classes, and class sizes with 28 or more represent 24.8% of the total number of division classes. As stated earlier, there's an increase of 23 classes with 20 or fewer students, and the increase is due to singleton classes such as AP, IB, Commonwealth Governor School, and advanced levels of world language classes. The number of classes with 28 or more decreased by five classes from last school year. Next, we will examine the elective class size comparison. Electives include CTE, English, for example, journalism, creative writing, et cetera; fine and performing arts; health, PE; science, for example, human anatomy and biomedical; and history, social studies, for example, global issues, sociology, and psychology. The following data points are not included in the high school elective class size report to ensure proper representation of elective class sizes. Self-contained classes, because the size is due to compliance requirements; inclusion classes, these sections have been included in the core class size report; virtual classes, these classes may include numerous sections in one class due to the individual nature of the online course; and independent study, these classes may include numerous sections in one class also. The average division elective class size is 23.5, ranging from 22.8 at Stafford High School to 24.2 at Mountain View High School. The average class size decreased from 24 in 2015-16 and increased from 22.8 in 2016-2017. This year, there are 167 elective classes with 15 or fewer students, ranging from 21 at Colonial Forge High School to 42 at Stafford High School. There are 870 elective classes with 16 to 32 students, ranging from 146 in Mountain View High School to 217 at Colonial Forge High School. There are 107 elective classes with 33 or more students, ranging from nine at Colonial Forge High School to 27 at Stafford High School. The average elective class size increased by .7 when compared to last year. The number of elective classes with 15 or fewer students decreased by 43 classes when compared to 2016-2017 and by 65 classes when compared to 2015-2016. The number of classes with 16 to 32 students, which is the optimal range, increased by 15 classes when compared to last year. The number of classes with 33 or more increased by 13 classes when compared to last year. Please note that all of these classes are PE, band, and cores. Current staffing standards were implemented this year in efforts to improve high school scheduling. The Office of the Chief Secondary Officer will continue to work with high school administration to complete the scheduling process, better forecast their needs, efficiently utilize FTEs, and hire at a time when talent is readily available. As we look ahead, our goals are to continue to increase the number of sections with 21 to 27 students in core subjects and decrease the number of sections with 20 or fewer students and 30 or more students in core subjects. As the board continues to focus on the staffing standards, we look forward to the future possibilities. Our areas of focus will continue to be the effective use of FTEs in scheduling practices. We will also develop and implement new staffing formulas for the high school level. And as I indicated earlier... And as I indicated earlier, we will also be asking for justification and somewhat approval for those probably, as a threshold of probably 12 or lower. We appreciate the board's support in efforts to reduce high school class size in the future. And as you know, it takes a team, especially when we're doing class size reports, and especially for the high school class size report. But a special thanks to, of course, Tom Nichols, Lisa Boatwright, and our technology team, Nicole Stewart, T.R. V., and Mary Lee Weeks. Any questions?
Sure.
Thanks Pam. What are the anomalies outside of the average at Brookpoint High School? Like, we saw a lot of the averages. What are we looking at as far as, like, aside from the obvious PE? What, do we have a class that's-
Talking about the core?
Yes.
The core. All right, for example, some of the anomalies, one, and I'm sure that Lisa and Tom can certainly help out with this, but one anomaly Brookpoint had, for example, was a physics class. They had it start at 18. Well, 10 students dropped, so we're down to eight.
Okay, now, on the other side of the spectrum?
On the other side.
Ban, high, real high?
Cores.
Oh, interesting, okay.
Actually, PE, band, and cores were for all, for the electives part that were 33 and above.
Okay. So, out of the higher averaging classes, I can't say unmanageable because our teachers are amazing and they can manage anything, but how many do we have that are higher numbers that are being taught by, say, long-term subs as opposed to seasoned teachers? Do we have that information?
I don't have yet.
Okay.
We can get that for you.
If at some point, just as you're looking through the data, just to find out, you know, because I do hear a lot of, from other people saying that, you know, we've got a lot of long-term subs in some of our classes, and I'd like to know if those core classes have long-term subs and they also have a high number of students, that creates another problem. Thanks.
Just to follow up on Ms. Egan's questions, with respect to the long-term subs, I'd like to know how many of them are licensed teachers? Because I know, in my experience with my child, sometimes her teacher was going to be out for several months or the rest of the year for whatever personal health reasons. And the teacher, the long-term subs that came in were actually licensed teachers that were willing to accept the long-term sub pay, which is significantly less than the teachers, as I understand it. So, I'd like to look at that as well. Thank you.
Do that, yes.
Just, just to follow up on Mrs. Healy's, to Mrs. Egan's, just give us the long-term sub laydown for all our schools, right? I know you were there anyway, so go ahead and do that. Because, you know, we did have a big to-do about vacant teaching positions in the beginning of the year, and a lot of community long-term subs and short-term subs, and so a laydown to the board would probably be a good idea.
Will do.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I just want to thank you guys for doing this work yet again. And it's good that our curve is moving to the left.
Yes.
But there's still, you know, it's a significant number in that frequency chart that are 28 and higher, or 30 and higher, and quick calculation off of the 30 and higher frequency, there's still, that creates about 4,000 instances of somebody being in a classroom of 30 or more students. And that's the folks we continue to hear from. And, you know, there are probably anomalies out there or issues out there where one kid ends up in 30 or more stu-, 30 or more student classroom for all of his core classes. So, I just encourage the board to continue working on this and continue receiving this report. Now, and you did state this, that all of this work thus far in moving this curve to the left has been a result, the majority of the result has been from scheduling work and improving our scheduling process. One thing this board hasn't done, and we did it with the elementary school, is set the caps on class sizes. It becomes a lot more difficult with middle school and then even more difficult with the high schools. But as we start looking at the staffing standards, I think that'd be wise to really give us some guidance on what can we really do with our staffing standards with a couple more FTEs at each school? How can we continue to bring these class sizes down and reduce the number of frequen-, number of times that 30-plus student classroom occurs within our schools? Good luck with that.
Sure, Mr. McCaskill.
Just real quick, is world language usually considered, like, in our comparison divisions as a core?
We have, I don't know, but we have historically done that here, so we're making everything consistent.
Okay.
So that when we're comparing, we're comparing apples to apples to the best we can.
Yeah, I mean, so I guess just, my thought is that if it's, it seems like it's a lot of low student instances in those classes, and so I just don't want to skew the, you know, when I think of core, I think kind of math, science, history. So, okay, all right.
Anyone else? I have a couple. Because I'm the liaison to the Fine and Performing Arts Committee, I mean, I do look at, and then, of course, we just recognized, you know, music and stuff, you know, some of these higher numbers there and stuff, maybe that is something we can talk about in the Fine and Performing Arts, because to make sure that we are, you know, addressing all our kids' needs and those, and those seem to consistently run high. Looking at the Health and PE, you know, those are higher, as we've talked about, as we design schools and stuff, we've been talking a lot about our common areas. This is where, you know, we see it, is in these common areas of lots of use. It seems like we just have to, you know, make sure that we are all talking about how we do scheduling in those spaces. So, again, I know this is difficult work. I think this is something we need to, when the board looks at the staffing standards, we need to have these reports, you know, our copies of them sitting with us as we continue to look at, you know, changes or possible changes we might want to make in that, in that way. I would be interested in the lists of the classes that are under 12 students, just what that list really looks like. I know you hit on some of them, and maybe some of them are constrained by CTE, but it really would be interesting to know what those are going forward.
You want core and elective?
Yeah. Just so we have some idea. But any other questions? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to our next report, which is for our program evaluation for IB. All right, Dr. Pierce?
Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Benson, tonight, the Office of Assessment Accountability and Program Evaluation will be reporting out on the International Baccalaureate Program Evaluation Report. So, before I give the podium to Dr. Tyree, I just wanted to point out to you all that you have two documents printed. One is the entire report, and then the other is a guidance document. Dr. Tyree will be referencing the guidance document tonight, and if there's a deeper dive that you want to do, she will reference the page numbers for certain data points within the guidance document.
So, we looked, like in the first Status and Process Evaluation we did, we looked at a number of questions in taking a look at the diploma program, which is the IB program offered at two of our high schools in Stafford County. The International Baccalaureate was basically created in the wake of the ends of World War I and World War II, as there was an increase in international transients with populations and the desire to create an internationally transferable diploma. It ultimately was expanded to include a primary years program, which includes a program for pre-K and elementary-age children, a middle-years program, which spans in the U.S. grades 6 through 10, and most recently in 2012, they added a career-related program, which can be frequently added to the diploma program that kind of blends the academics with the vocational programs. So, Stafford County offers the diploma program, which is the original IB offering at two of its high schools, Mountain View High School and Brookpoint High School. We have the option for students to participate either as individual course takers or by pursuing the entire IB diploma. So, depending on which track they do depends on kind of which way students, how concentrated their work is. So, when we surveyed parents and students, we saw, from parents, we basically heard that there was no one main method they were learning about the program. There was a plurality of the open house events, such as the signature programs night, but there was not a majority response. In the students, you can see that most of them were hearing from their school counselor about the program. Both families and students, parents and students, reported learning about the program predominantly in middle school. When we took a look at finances for the program, essentially what you saw is a total of $208,522. However, that also includes subject fees of $88,624. This is from fiscal year 2017, and those are reimbursed by the students in the same way, for example, AP test fees are reimbursed by students. So, essentially, the total, once you account for that, is $119,898 across both schools. And that shows you just the, this breakdown just shows the fees from the International Baccalaureate Organization. In terms of course offerings, when students are pursuing the diploma program, there's basically two different types of courses that the diploma program offers. There's higher level and standard level. Some of the research I read compared a standard-level course to about a semester's worth of college, while others in the higher level to a year's, two semesters' worth of college-level work. So, if that mentally kind of gives a comparison. So, this gives you just the number of sections of each type offered. In the appendices in the full report, you can see a full listing of the specific course offerings at each school. The TOK refers to the Theory of Knowledge Course, which is part of the core components completed by diploma students, and that's kind of an outlier. It's not classified as a higher level or a standard-level course. As part of the performance data that our department looked at, we looked at the SAT scores, and what I found most interesting in this arena was that there's really, it's very comparable between our division-wide scores and our IB population until the new SAT was adopted. And the new SAT that began in the school, 2015-16 school year, switched to an evidence-based reading and writing format. And in that case, particularly when you look at the diploma earners, you do see higher scores, which makes sense as the IB curriculum tends to focus on a fair amount of critical reading and writing. In terms of demographics, the, the program as a whole, there's not a huge, I didn't see necessarily huge gaps between different racial and ethnic groups and their participation in the program. When you narrow down in the report, there's a breakdown by course takers versus diploma students, and when you get into the diploma students, we do see some gaps. That is an area that we'll want to work on and that we talk about in the recommendations. But in terms of students taking courses, there were not significant gaps overall. I did also want to point out that in the last report, there had been some requests made for some additional demographic categories. And so, in the full report, beginning on page 99, you can find a breakdown of EL, Special Education, Free and Reduced Lunch, and Gifted Population participation in the program. In terms of recommendations, I'm not going to go through all of these tonight, however, as in other programs we're looking at right now, recommendation that we set division-specific goals, obviously the International Baccalaureate Organization internationally has specific goals, but we haven't necessarily, as a division, decided what we want to use this program for. So, there's that recommendation. There are several recommendations related to access, such as transportation. This is the one signature program that we don't provide transportation for, so taking a look at that. When I looked at our comparison divisions that are covered in the literature review, you see that pretty much all of them provide transportation if they offer the International Baccala-, Baccalaureate program in some capacity. So, it depends. You have some schools offering it, all of their high schools, and therefore, they're just riding their bus to their normal school. Others take kind of a hub where they ride a bus to a central hub and then take a bus to whichever signature program or specialty program they're participating in. In terms of preparation recommendations, as in the last report, kind of continuing to strengthen the vertical alignment across the division, and then also considering the creation of a true pre-IB program. Students kind of declare interest in this program in eighth grade, and there is some pre-IB structure prior to that. There's some specific courses, they meet some, but there's not a true pre-IB program, such as the middle-years program or just one created in-house. And then some broader recommendations, for example, considering some alternative funding streams to help offset the cost of offering IB. When you look nationally at IB programming, a lot of these are set up as magnet schools where they can apply for federal Magnet Schools Assistance Program grants at the federal level. There's some different state grants, so there might be some options that could help offset some of the cost in adopting the IB program. And then in terms of longitudinal data, right now, we could do a better job of, as a division, tracking students who declare an interest in the program and then whether they stick with it through the pre-IB process and into the junior and senior year.
Any questions?
I just have a real quick question. You had mentioned that IB could be considered a magnet school that could be eligible for certain grant programs or dollars. Would you say the same thing for CGS?
So, CGS, it, so, as a magnet school, you typically qualify for the federal funding. You're going to be focused on a true magnet school format, which is going to be fostering diversity of some sort. So, you would have to consider how to, you know, if you applied for a Magnet Schools Assistance Program type of grant, you'd probably have to show how you were going to use that to-
But it's possible. So, if we were to establish certain criteria within the CGS, both of them equally, I'm just looking at other ways to get some more money funneled into some of our programs so we can broaden-
CGS, we receive state funding since it falls under the Governor's School, so I don't know how that would affect-
Right, and that's, right, so that's, that's kind of why I was asking, because it is funded by the state. I wonder if we could meet some of the criteria for the federally mandated magnet stuff, if we could actually do that with CGS and get additional monies to help pay for that. So, just, just thought I'd throw it out there. Thanks.
All right.
With that, just follow up, with that magnet funding, can we keep it within the jurisdiction though, or do, do we have to open up the magnet school to a broader region? Because like Thomas Jefferson up in Fairfax County, it falls under that, I believe, and they have both CGS and IB programs in there.
They fall under being a state Governor's School for the gifted, but they, as far as I know, I don't think they're receiving federal Magnet Schools Assistance Program funds. So, it would be a different, for example, Florida is a very active- So it would be a different, for example, Florida is a very active IB adopter. They provide really nice incentives for students that complete the full diploma. They get pretty ample scholarships at their state schools. And they will use, they frequently will use, and I can get you all some of the federal reports on these magnet schools, but they frequently have used the IB as kind of their magnet theme for a school that they're setting up as a magnet school. And it recruits from within the division, but they use it as a way to make sure that their school system isn't becoming segregated and to foster that diversity.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Thank you for a very voluminous report. So I guess the first question is, the first one came out with like 200 pages, and then now this one's down to, I think, 119 or something like that. What happened there?
It's, when we move it from Microsoft Word to Adobe InDesign.
Oh, you changed the.
It lets you shrink.
Okay, because I was expecting 203, but I.
So it's a font shrinkage and eliminating the spacing and the double columns and the margins are smaller.
Right.
That's it.
Okay, well, good, that's good to know. So what I did is I took a, I reviewed both the CGS report and then I compared it to this report. I'll admit, I didn't get through all through the IB's history, but I tried to address some of the data points. The one thing on the executive summary is that I found in the IB report that the OOAP, OAAP recommends continuing the IB program while considering the following recommendations, and then you laid out your recommendations. But there was no such, there was no such validation of the CGS on the same executive summary. So I would ask that if you're going to put a statement in there in the executive summary, which most people read quickly before they read the report, that at least you're consistent with that message. So either you're supporting them, you're not supporting them, you don't say anything about supporting, and then you just put the recommendations. Here are the, we reviewed the programs and here are the recommendations. And maybe let the board worry about supporting or not supporting. That's just, that's just very minor. Because I know later on in the report, you do mention about, you know, the CGS is very valid for gifted students, and I think we should, you know, so you do kind of validate the same, you know, thing. So that was one thing. The second thing was on Appendix I on the IB program was really, I couldn't read it. So I think you threw it in there and it got screwy on the.
I agree that I'm not happy with some of the.
Okay, so if we just get that cleaned up before we go final, because I just can't read the numbers and on that as well.
I've already reached out on that today.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good. And then the costing, I think the costs were pretty, you know, I think the costs traversed across the reports pretty well. I don't think, because I do know textbooks are a lot, you know, almost probably a million dollars or $600,000, $700,000 for textbooks, I think it was, for the IB program, of which the students fund 88,000 of it, I guess from student fees or at least at one school. I don't know if that was total. So I was a little confused on the textbook piece of it, because I was, maybe I was reading different, different things, but I saw that the textbooks were very expensive. And then the students were funding like 88,000 of those in student fees, and I just, so that's not, okay, let me, let me go to my tabs here and just make sure that we're.
The students reimburse for subject fees, which is the subject fee for IB. So because the International Baccalaureate Program, so for example with AP, which many of us are a little more familiar with, you have one end-of-course exam, basically, and that also in this division, students reimburse that funding. With International Baccalaureate, they call it a subject fee, I think partially because it involves assessments throughout the year. So there's kind of a end-of-course exam, but then there's, which is called an external assessment that's solely graded outside of Stafford County schools. And then there are also usually two to three internal assessments that take place throughout the course. And those are internal assessments graded by the IB teachers in Stafford County schools, and then basically the IBO audits a sampling of them. And to make sure that our teachers are meeting their grading standards, essentially.
Okay, so yeah, it says the LOD, LOD spending is 88, on page 41. LOD spending included 88,000 on subject fees largely reimbursed by students.
Right, so that's the equivalent of like the test fee.
Okay, testing fee.
It's not a textbook.
But we did have textbook, didn't we have textbook fees in here?
There are, there was a textbook adoption last year.
Right.
And for one of the courses, and so it was, I can't remember the exact number, I want to say.
And you know, all courses have textbooks, I get it, but it's, it was, it was a pretty steep number that I was reviewing. And it may be from, maybe from the, maybe from the, some other notes that I got. Okay. Well, in short, I could sit here for a while and kind of nickel and dime it, but I'm not nickel and dime it, it's a good, it's a good report. I just want to make sure that we're, we're being consistent with our messaging from the staff on, here's a review of the CGS program, fair and imbalanced, and here's a review of the IB program, fair and imbalanced. So those little things, like in the executive summary that I mentioned, that lends to, get my spidey sense up on it, right? So let's just take a good look at our wording as our, on the staff, and just make sure that we're doing the right thing, fair and imbalanced, that's all.
Absolutely.
Because we're going to review as a board, costs in depth, I'm sure, at a later date. And then APPX is up next. So yeah. Okay.
All right, anybody else? I have a couple of comments, but anybody else? I mean, I think one of the things that we've noticed in both our reports, and I appreciate that we've gone in-depth on who's attending our program, who's staying in our program, who, what are we, is this program open to everybody and is everybody taking advantage of it? I think that's something we, as a board, need to wrestle with ourselves, but I think having the data in front of us is, is the way we can do. So I appreciate the work. I know it was, I know this was a huge task. I know it's one that the board's been asking for. So thank you very much for, for everything. And if for some reason there are other comments about these programs, I know we will talk later in the evening about our scheduling of reviewing this totally, but if you have other really in-depth ones, we might want to get those to our presenter earlier rather than later, because she may be leaving us for a little while. So if there are some things, if we could think of them on the front end, I think that would be helpful for our presenter as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we will move on to our citizens' comments. This evening, we have two separate times for citizen comment. The first one is considered a public hearing, which will be about the superintendent's funding request for citizen input. The second one will be our standard citizen comments. So with regard to the public hearing, like it states, please speak, that will be about budget matters. When we get to standard citizen comments, they can be on any topic, of course. So I will give the general invitation about how we do comments, but I will do public hearing, the public hearing first. I have one person signed in. If you have not signed in, that's fine. I will, at the, at the conclusion of his remarks, invite anybody else who wishes to speak on that. So let me just go over how we do this. When you come forward, please identify yourself by name, address, and organizational affiliation if you represent an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Again, if it's regarding the public hearing on the budget, please be budget comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker. We use the stoplight system, green, yellow, and red. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining. When it's red, you get, that means time is up, you get about five seconds to wrap it up. If for some reason you have written comments you would like to present to the board, you can certainly hand them to our clerk at the end of your remarks. The chairman reserves the right to restrict total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. And although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113, Public Complaints. This is a time for comment. We will not have a dialogue. You will want to use your whole three minutes. So I will open our public hearing on the superintendent's budgeting request. We have Mr. Harry Mack has signed in to speak first, so come on forward.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Benson, Harry Mack, 11105 Dogwood Drive, in George Washington District. I just had a question. I'm not sure it's in Dr. Benson's budget, but two years and two months ago, we opened in Stafford Senior High School. Thank you for that, but it was late. And at that period of time, there was a public announcement that the contractor was going to be held for a $1,000 a day assessment. Well, they finished the sign the other day. The electric's not out in front, it works now. So I assume that the contract is complete at that time. The way I count that, it's about $710,000. I'm not sure that we'll ever recover any money, but if we recover any money, I would like the board to put it in the appropriations for Stafford Senior High School, because those are the students and staff that had that delay and suffered the consequences for that.
Great, thank you. Anybody else speak coming on the budget? I figured, I was just, so please, if you are wanting to speak and you still want to, feel free to go ahead and get out of your chair and start to line up. That would be great. Go ahead. Sorry, Ms. Brown.
Sorry, just finishing now. Dana Brown, 41 St. Williams, Rock Hill, for the budget. A couple of meetings ago, I brought you three ideas. I've got two more tonight. First one would be adding back in a study hall for the high school. We can budget for that. I think I have some ideas how to pay for that. My suggestion is we could use the gifted teacher who is monitoring the virtual Virginia. I have a high school gifted student, and she's not really receiving gifted services in high school. I'm not, I'm of the opinion that you don't probably need a gifted teacher in the high school. That's probably controversial, and they're all going to hate me, but that's how I feel. And the other thing I wanted to suggest was maybe budgeting some type of money to bring back a bridge-type program. Not the bridge program we had before, but something along those lines. We can get some experienced teachers back in here to help fill the sub shortage that we're having. So I think that might help us out in the long run, and maybe we could do that. That was it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else regarding the budget hearing? Okay, seeing nobody leaping over chairs, I will then go ahead and close that section of citizen comment. And now the next one is on general citizen comment on any other topic. Anyone wishing to speak this evening, please come on down. And I forgot to ask you to sign in, Ms. Brown. You should know by now.
Okay, Dana Brown, 41 St. Williams Way. I just had three things I wanted to talk about tonight really quick. Your agenda item 1402, which is your proposed amendments to policies assigned to the superintendent, it wasn't redlined, and it was very difficult for me to read what the changes were. And perhaps before it comes back for action, we can get that redlined so we can tell. Second thing was, is last week, I had the privilege to go on a field trip with the governor's school on a non-school day. We went down and visited some colleges, and one of them was the Richard Bland Junior College. And the CGS program just switched our dual enrollment classes from Germana to Richard Bland, I think for a variety of reasons. But I was very excited about the new partnership. I think we've negotiated a much better deal or arrangement that we have at Richard Bland that was offered by Germana. The campus was really great. I think it's a win-win for, for both of us. And then the last thing I wanted to talk about was class sizes. I don't have a lot of time tonight to go through my whole list, so I noticed earlier they were talking about your average class size. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the actual class size. And as you all know, I've been looking over the master's schedule, I got last year's, and I looked at this year's again. And we have, I mean, and I haven't even finished going through the list, but so far, almost 40 classes that are really, really low. And I understand, you know, I was taught by people and staff how to read it, that a lot of our classes that are low are combined. But even being combined, we have a lot, lot of low classes. And yes, most of them happen to be IB classes. We have a couple of regular math classes at Mountain View, there are regular geometry that has 10. We have a 1Y class, a 1X class, and a regular math analysis, 2X and 2Y have 12. Those were our core classes I found that were low. But we've got a lot of IB classes that have like six in them, and 11 in them, and eight in them, and 13, 12, 14, let's see, nine, 10, 14, 15, 14, 10. And I have all these written down of which ones they were. We have a lot of them at Brookpoint, actually, this time. Got a lot of foreign language classes that are really low. The point being in all this is, before we go across the street and we start screaming we don't, you know, have enough teachers and we don't have enough classrooms, we need a new high school, in my opinion, we are wasting a lot of full-time FTEs on these classes that shouldn't be making. And I thought the class had to be 15 to be considered a class before it was drawn. So we are wasting a full-time FTE and a classroom on these class sizes that probably shouldn't be in. So again, before we go across the supervisor and say, you know, we don't have enough teachers, we don't have enough classrooms, maybe we really do. And I know that we said we were going to scrub the master's schedule. I think that was quoted in the paper over the summer about, we were talking about how many classes that we didn't have enough teachers hired for yet. I don't think we're scrubbing the master's schedule. Dr. Benson has, you know, said we were going to be retraining on that for two summers now. This problem is not getting better, it's only getting worse. So that was it. Thank you.
Yes. All right, anybody else on public comment? Hearing none, then I will close public, public comment, and we will move on to board member committee reports and comments. We first will start with our Student Discipline Committee report.
Madam Chair, on October 19th, 2017, a committee of the school board met to consider one student discipline matter. The committee expelled student A and authorized the student to attend the Regional Alternative Education Program.
All right, thank you. Moving on to board member committee reports. Mr. Harris, do you want to give that one?
Yeah, from the Fab. We do have, as Mr. Bukosker spoke to earlier today, the CIP process, the Joint CIP Process Oversight Committee. We have a follow-up meeting from our meeting last week on Monday, November 20th, I think that's this coming Monday, 6:30 PM. I think that's over at ABC Conference Room again. Pretty important stuff being discussed there, so we'll certainly want to ensure we give a good briefing back to the full board about what's coming out of that oversight committee at some point. The next Fab committee meeting is scheduled for December 7th, and I believe at 4:30, right back here. We will probably retain that meeting and go ahead and have that meeting for the Fab members to discuss what has gone on with the oversight committee and, I have a few other things that are coming up.
Anybody else? I can report, we had a governance committee meeting last Thursday, talked about some important issues, I think, coming up and some recommendations that the board, that the governance committee will be bringing to the board. Right now, it was more idea mode and working on some documents. Once the documents are ready, we will be bringing those to the board. All right, anybody else? Nope, okay. All right, moving on to board member comments. All right, who wants to start? Okay, go ahead, Ms. Egan.
I'll be really brief. Thank you to all of those folks who came out to vote last week. Thank you to those in the Acquahia District that cast your vote for me. I'll be working with you for another four years. Congratulations to Pam Young, Sarah Chase, and to our newest Acquahia supervisor, Cindy Shelton. I look forward to meeting with her and getting. Shelton. I look forward to meeting with her and getting her up to speed on some of the things that we've been working on between the two boards. Thank you to the PTO and the PTA community, our folks who came out last night, right here in these chambers, to discuss budget priorities. Looking forward to doing this again next go-round. And just some high school PSA, Learn and Serve is doing their annual food drive again this year. Thursday, they will be accepting food items at the school. And the Blackhawks made the playoffs, so they are going to take on North Stafford Friday evening. Go Blackhawks. That's it.
I know, that's right. Or is there going to be a little bet going here? Okay, won't go there, won't go there. Ms. Healy, you want to go next?
Well, now that we're talking about high school sports, I think we need to recognize the Mountain View Girls Field Hockey Team, second year in a row, state tramps. And Mrs. Hazard, if it's possible, I'd like to invite them to the next meeting. I think we have a tradition of inviting the state tramps to a school board meeting if they can't come the next meeting, perhaps in December. But wow, what an accomplishment. We're very, very fortunate to have such great coaches, and also parents. I was in the Giant one day, and one of the moms was in there looking at the nutritional things on the, you know, the power bars and things, and saying, I said, "Oh, what school are you buying them for?" She said, "Mountain View Field Hockey." That was a couple of weeks ago, but it was, it was pretty, pretty amazing to have a undefeated record, right, Mrs. Hazard? And she was telling me how much pressure the team was under. I mean, it's, you think things are going good when you're undefeated, but it almost makes it harder because you want to keep, keep that up. Anyway, that's my, "Go Mountain View," and all our other teams. We are very fortunate to have our wonderful coaches that we have, because we certainly couldn't do what we do, and goodness knows, when you look at the stipends they're paid, they're, they're not even close to the time that they, they put in, just like, you know, all our other staff. Also want to welcome our new two school board members, who I see are sitting there in the audience. Thank you for coming, and looking forward to working with you. And I'll hold my recognition for Mr. Hirons and Mr. Conley till the next meeting. I'm sure we'll be having a recognition for them then, as well. So happy holidays. Hope everyone enjoys the break next week, and run some if you can. Mr. Makosker, we're going to be on the race this week, right, at the Virginia School Boards, but you said we're going to speed walk?
I'm going to give the superintendent the biggest spanking on the 5K.
I'm really glad you finished that.
I think Mrs. Decatur beat both of us last year.
Actually, he's going to, he's going to be like well-rested by the time I finish. But I'm going to give, we're going to give an A for effort, right?
Anybody else that wants to join us? I think, I think we decided we're going to speed walk this year and not, not try to race-run, although last time, I think Mrs. Decatur was very graciously trying to hold back and run with us, and finally. It's like my daughter told me once, she goes, "Mommy, I can't run this slow." I was like, "Go ahead." Thank you.
Mr. Conley, you have any comments?
Just quickly, again, I want to congratulate Pam Young for, for her election and for passing the torch to represent the Garrisonville District. So I think you'll do a wonderful job.
Ms. Decatur?
Also want to congratulate you guys. Job well done. And also thank those of you from the PTA, PTO who came out last night to talk budget. So important that we talk about that. Those of you who are here, please be present and speak up when we talk about these budget considerations for the upcoming year. It's really important to hear from you guys. So thanks for those of you who came out last night. Congratulations to our two members. Looking forward to attending the VSBA conference with my fellow people up here. Last year was, I was a newbie, so I'll be returning this year. I'll walk with you again. And yeah, lots of fun stuff coming up.
Mr. Makosker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So once again, Sarah Chase, Pam Young, thank you very much for running, and congratulations. Board of Supervisors, Cindy Shelton and Mark Dudenhaffer. I think Mark Dudenhaffer made it. I think that was the, yeah, I think that was the, and of course, Bob Thomas. I think, I think he made it as well. So it was an exciting go-around. I'm going to save our deep thought-out comments for our two departing school board members for the December 12th, I think it is, meeting. Sad to see them go. Again, PTO budget was wonderful last night. Didn't have as many PTO folks as I thought we would have, and so I think we're, we've already talked with Missy, and we're going to try to figure that out, how to make sure we send the official order down to the school. You will send, you know, Tom Nichols said, "You will send two people from the PTO from each high school and each middle school," and Pam and Ms. Neely, and get the folks.
Well, if you want them to come, you need to do "shall."
"Shall"? Oh, that's right, the legal "shall," yes, yes. Lastly, thanks for all the hard work so far this year. We've come to, it's almost, you know, half the year's over, even though it's only a couple of months into the school. So hard work on the staff's part, getting these reports out and doing the hard work that they do, and then down at the school level, all the hard work by the principals, the staff, and of course, the teachers and the support folks. Keep up the good work. We're going to go into, next week, we'll go into our, our break, our first, our first break. And then before you know it, it'll be January, and we'll be back to, back to working hard all the way through the year, so. So recharge the batteries and sharpen the spear, and sharpen the, sharpen the knife, and then we'll come back, and we'll see you on the 12th, and then we'll see you in January. Thanks.
Mr. Hirons?
I don't know, but I think last week was kind of exciting for some of us. Like our other folks, I'd get the chance to say congratulations to Dr. Sarah Chase. I'm going to force you to stand up. There's no more hiding for you. Dr. Chase, thank you very much for, for running and being willing to serve. I've sent her an email. I told her an email. As a Falmouth District parent, as a Stafford County Public Schools parent, I'm really happy. I've gotten to know Sarah. She's extremely capable. She is going to be a real asset for this board. I told people when I found out she was running, "Wow, if I wasn't running, I'd vote for her." And my wife may have voted for you. But job well done, and I'm excited. I'm a resource for you. Anytime you want to reach out, we've already talked about getting together and doing a good transition here. But I'm, I'm excited. I'm really happy, because it could have been a lot worse. Couple of other comments I did want to make. I did want to address Mr. Mack's comments because I want to make sure there's not misinformation out there. The contractor for Stafford High School, he's right, the sign is now lit, and it looks like, I don't know if this project's officially completed yet or not, Mr. Rand, if I pontificate on that. Those projects never actually end. But they were, the only portion of the project that they were subject to fines for being late was Phase 1, I believe. And those fines have been adjudicated and negotiated, and we received an in-kind contribution from them in the form of a field. So those are, all those fines are, are done and taken care of, unless there were any follow-on project fines, et cetera, but I doubt if they'll add up to what the initial fees were. So I just want to make sure that the Stafford County, or Stafford High School community doesn't have this expectation of $700,000 coming to that community. That's not going to happen, with all the fees were taken care of. Someone brought up some sports, and Stafford High School football team is in the playoffs, I believe, for the first time in a good, long time. First time they've had a winning season in a good, long time. Some of the guys from the teams in the 1960s, 60s have been making it out to the games, and theirs pumped. Apparently, they were a pretty good team back in those days. We faced some challenges with Stafford High School's athletic program early on in my tenure here on the board. We addressed those very proactively, made some coaches changes, and it's showing on the field, which is important or exciting. But it's also important because that, you know, a good sports program, good athletic program, also inspires a lot of kids to actually show up to school and get to school and raise a school spirit. I sent an email to Principal Lewis that said, "I got a couple teenagers that, at least a few weeks ago, I wasn't having any challenges getting them up to go to school because they were excited to go to school. They were excited to wear their, their blue and gold and get out there and support the school, not just the teams, but the school as a whole, because there was a lot of school spirit." And that's pretty important to ensure we keep kids going to school. But Coach Mo Hampton, my hat is really off to him. He really has created a new environment there, a new DNA has he, has, has created there, and the excitement in the stands is really off the wall. This past week is a little challenging because it was about 25 degrees, I think, at game time, and it was a little cold for the blue wave to be out there. But I guess they knew that the team had it taken care of, and they beat a team from Roanoke Patrick Henry High School, I think it was, 48 to nothing. So great job to Stafford High School. And that's all I have. Apparently, December 12th could be an interesting meeting as I get kicked out the door.
Well, Mr. Conley and I were just talking about, when you watch football, it's supposed to be like cold, right? Okay, it's not, it's not just me. So some of us grew up in colder temperatures than sitting in a football field, and it's 85 degrees. Watching a game is somewhat hard for some of us. I like to have my towel, and I'll just leave it at that, because I'm sure you'll figure out where I'm from. So, but moving on to our school district and stuff, there's so many great things going on in our schools. You almost can't start. Ms. Healy talked about the Mountain View Field Hockey Team, but also the Mountain View Marine Corps. JROTC had their first, first ball this year for the birthday ball, which I know had a lot of kids in attendance. Looked like it was a great event. Also, we all had a wonderful time at our Band Together to Fight Hunger. We know we will all be waiting for, to hear our totals, which every year always seemed to keep going up. And that's always exciting. So to see our students, it seems like it's sort of music night tonight that we are, we are talking about. Also, going forward, we have, of course, our, our two new board members. There's so much great work that's been started. We are very much a data-run board, and so we welcome our continuing progress towards a data-driven group. I know that we will be, we will be moving forward there. I have posted, if people do watch my Facebook, I have announced that we will be, I will be having a budget and growth meeting focused in the Hartwood District. Of course, anybody can, can come. One of the things that I think is very interesting, I've done, I think growth is one of our biggest issues in Hartwood. If anybody knows me, I've been talking about it for a while. Having done some math recently, the active developments in Hartwood right now, these are the ones that are on the books with houses that can be built any day, are 2,823 units in Hartwood as of today. And currently, right now, I have, there are active applications in the board over across the street for about 339 units that are in the pipeline. So I do believe, and then there's two reclassifications that have also come in that I haven't quite been able to figure out the numbers. Therefore, that's why I'm very committed to our joint CIP process. We need to make sure that growth is a part of this, of our discussions in everything that we do, because with growth like that, that could be popping up, and that is just one of seven districts, that there are that many homes that could be built, we need to be examining that, and I'm hoping through further discussions with our counterparts across the street, through three-on-threes, through CIP training, and finding out what do we really need in this county. Last night, when we really talked with our PTO presidents, one of the neat things that did come up was us all talking about technology and the need for technology. I think in order for our particular board to move to any one-to-one or two-to-one kind of technology, we also have to address on the county level, the ability to make sure that there is internet access for all the homes in our, in our county. Representing Hartwood, I can tell you, if you're ever talking to me on the phone, you can find a dead spot really easily. So I think that's something we need to work on with the county in order to move forward, in order to help our students, but also for our students to be able to access that technology in our home. I hope all of our citizens will help us in that, especially those who probably can't be watching us right now because they don't even have the internet connection that works in their home. So that's one area. I thought it was a great discussion with our PTO presidents that really highlighted that and allowed for a broader discussion, and I hope we continue that particular discussion. Let's see. Let's see, Mr. Makosker, you and Dr. Benson, are you all bringing something on the calendar? I know you all were discussing it from last meeting. I didn't know if we had an update on that. I'm sorry. I meant to ask that during your, your, your comments, because I, I didn't know. I know you all were going to bring us something to work on. Please.
For the, oh, calendar.
You all, you all, you all said you all were, you all were working on some emails together about it?
I haven't, I haven't done any research on that yet.
Okay, we have asked now for like three meetings, and I'm not trying to, we need to, I think one of the challenges for the calendar committee this past year was it got so late. It sounds like we have been talking about getting this done. I think we need to move forward on whatever process we're doing to start early. I think that was a consensus of this board to, I mean, I had Ms. Healy saying September, we all agreed last year we would work on this process, and...
Let's put it down for our offsite.
We can do that unless there is a consensus. I thought we wanted to move forward on this. Maybe I missed it.
Why don't, why don't we set a date that we want to make a decision by and then determine, you know, back it out, back it out from there?
From our last retreat, it was September.
Well, we're beyond September, so we need to, we need to rethink it. We're talking about not the next school year, but the school year after that, correct? So we do have some time. Traditionally, we've tried to make that decision at least a year in advance, because a lot of our, our families and our staff make their summer plans. The beach weeks get a little cheaper as August rolls around. So I'd say, you know, we need to try to do it sometime before the end of the school year would be.
Wow. Last year, we waited till May, and then everybody said we ran out of time. So I'm just, I'm getting calls from my own people.
Can we just start the process over again? Just kick it to Dr. Benson and let them start, let them do their thing and let them handle it?
I think we need public hearings. I think we need real input. I don't want to wait.
Well, I anticipated getting the new board members on first, and then we start spinning up the calendar. I mean...
Okay, this board had a completely different, so I'm just trying to go with what was said. You all wanted comments done by the fall, and I don't think we should always, okay, that's fine. If the consensus of the board is to wait, that's fine.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to wait. I want to, I want to give it back to Dr. Benson and let him run with it.
The next meeting, the next meeting, and we're never getting anywhere. So I guess I will tell my constituents, when the board wants to move on it, we will. I have tried to move this. I have constituents calling because they live in other districts and are calling about childcare. Can you all please figure out what you're going to do about?
I haven't gotten any personal...
Can we clarify what, what has been the holdup? What is, so now what are we doing moving forward? What, so this has been brought up, so now let's figure, let's, let's work.
If we would like to discuss it at the end with the next board meetings, that is fine, but I just, this is something it seemed was important to, to everybody, and I just don't want to continue.
Well, why don't we put it on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting? Then we can, you know, come prepared.
Why don't we do, why don't we come with our discuss future meetings on 1404 tonight, at least generally, of how long we want to give a date?
I'd like to be able to think about this more and talk about an approach, because the reason that we said we were going to do something different was, it was so, I'll use the word unfair to the calendar committee, what happened the last time. I mean, they did all this work, and then we basically threw it out and did something different. So, you know, I don't want to waste people's time, but... So, you know, I don't want to waste people's time, but, you know, we can talk and talk and talk tonight, but, you know, I'd like to think about it, you know, before we, you know, have this discussion. And while I certainly respect Dr. Benson, and I know he'll do a good job, whatever we give him, I think if this goes to Dr. Benson, it needs to go with some very, you know, clear parameters so that, you know, he knows what the charge is and we're not spinning wheels or wasting, you know, his time, staff times, parents' times, you know, volunteers in the Calendar Committee time.
Okay. I agree. That's okay. All right. Well, let's, Dr. Benson, your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this is American Education Week, and it's been celebrated the same week, the week before Thanksgiving, since 1921. Long time. Educational landscape has changed significantly in that time, but I can say that the importance of public education has never been greater. And I'm really proud of our school division. When we talk about meeting the needs of all of our kids, we mean all of our kids, and I think we do a great job in doing that. One of the things that's different today than it was in 1921 is the number of adults that are here to interact and provide support for our young people across the division. And it really is everybody in our school system. It's, yes, absolutely, teachers, but also our paraprofessionals, our principals, assistant principals, nurses, social workers, custodians, cafeteria workers, bus drivers, and you can keep going on because pretty much it's everybody. Everybody in this division has something to do with providing a quality experience for our for our young people. And so, this is a week just to kind of step back a little bit and say, wow, you know, this is this is a great thing. Our folks do an incredible job, and we get some really positive outcomes for our students. The theme from the National Education Association is that connecting great public schools, it's a basic right, and it is a great equalizer. If I paraphrase Horace Mann, "Education beyond all devices of human origin is the great equalizer." He said of men, we're going to say of men and women, everybody. And so, you know, we we take on that responsibility of providing a quality service for our community. And our team is committed to to learning excellence and service, and most importantly, preparing our young our young folks, our students, to be successful in further education, citizenship, and and work. So, I just want to take a moment just to thank everybody. Everybody is a part of this organization at every level because everybody has contributed to to the positive outcomes that our students are experiencing. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on to consent. Do I have a motion to approve consent items?
Motion to approve?
There are second, all right. Moved in second, and any comment or poll?
Is the consent fixed? It's not changed?
I haven't pulled them off the agenda, but I will pull on for the meeting minutes. I will make sure they reflect that you made this motion. Do you want me to take them off of the agenda itself? Because then there won't be any record of what it is you're taking off.
No, I mean, that's, so whatever's
We're approving it without the two that you wanted removed.
Right.
Should we take it off?
Well, no, I mean, the the it's it's maybe you can redline it to say they were removed because that's the way the agenda was approved.
Yeah. Yeah. Because if you put approval and they're there, then you're approving them.
Right.
That's not what we agreed to.
Take them off right now.
But you can you can reflect that when the agenda was approved, those two items were deleted from there.
Do that.
Okay. Whatever you have to do, but we just need to know what we're voting on.
Exactly.
I mean, I'd take them off. They're not going to disappear. I mean, we're going to, we can make them reappear quickly.
So, with that, which was what was agreed to when we opened was that 12.07 did not include attachments four and five.
Right. That's okay. That's fine.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Consent is approved. Let's move on to information items. The first one is 1401. Are there any questions about this particular item?
Yeah, there are.
I think everybody's read that.
Madam Chairman, this isn't a question, but since this involves a student, I'd say health and safety. You know, I'd ask the board to consider moving it to action.
That was going to be my request, so. Is that, is there agreement? No? Yes?
That was a motion in second.
Yes.
Motion second, yeah.
All right. That, the motion is to move 12, 1401 to action. That is the first
We do want to discuss, though.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to, okay, is there, is there, let me take a call on moving it to this one, and then we'll move. Yep. Okay. So, all those to move it to action this evening, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries to move it to action. All right. Questions or discussion?
Move, put a motion on table first?
Um, let's have
Just move it over
Right, now we have, right.
So, I'd move to approve 1401.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and any discussion or questions?
Yes, please. Looking at the list of elementary schools, I noticed that Annie Moncur is not on this list. We have, we went back at the urgency of some of the parents that were concerned, that Moncur, being the age that it is, did not, was not included in this group that was being tested. It's since been tested, and we found that there were some anomalies at the certain areas within the school. So, why would we not add that to this group of elementary schools?
Well, it must have been oversight.
Again?
No, I mean, they've been tested. Moncur's been tested. It's complete.
It's been tested.
Oh, okay.
So, I assume you're looking at the list of schools that have not been tested.
Correct.
That's right. So, Moncur is not
Okay, but it doesn't show up on the on the preview. Can we just make a notation in here somewhere?
Sure, absolutely.
Because the last, the agenda that that addressed all of this was missing Moncur.
That's what I mean. It must have been oversight on the on the one list that has the schools completed. Moncur is one that's been completed.
Okay. But I just want it to be noted somewhere that it's
My apologies.
It was looked at, and it's been done, so we don't continue to have questions.
You bet.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one. Hey, Mr. Haran, so I'm looking at the attachment three. So, by what I read, AG Wright Middle School has 15, and North Stafford High School has 18 parts per million, parts per billion?
They have locations, 15 locations
15 locations that are issues.
Higher than the 15 parts per billion.
Aye, okay. So, that that was one question. The second question is the mitigation.
That's correct.
So, I'm approving something, but I just want to know, so what is the mitigation? Because it says TBD on here.
That's right. Because we haven't determined, the 30-second flush test helps us determine whether the actual fixture is where we think the lead is leaching from, or if we have problems further down the line. Some of those have just been coming in. They're complete, but we're analyzing the results. So, the actual mitigation and our plan to mitigate and the timeline to mitigate hadn't been finalized. So, that's why when at the, when we developed this list and posted it to go online, they were TBD. So, we're in the process of getting costing data, too, for those mitigation efforts. They're going to be, some are going to be as simple as just take, replace the faucet.
Or if they replace the solder, the solder point.
That's right, very easy. And then, of course, we'll have to do post-mitigation testing to make sure that, in fact, we don't have those high lead again, and that our localization of where we think the lead might have been leaching from was correct.
Okay.
Let me confirm that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, that does. That helps. Thanks. I'm good.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Then, is there, all right. Why don't I call the question? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Is there a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I missed you. I didn't hear you.
Yep. All right. All those, let's just vote again to be sure. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Moving on to 1402 with the superintendent's recommendations. You want to give us an overview of this?
Yes, Madam Chair. So, this is this is a little bit different manner in which we are bringing some, in some cases, just a code reference update to policies that have not been reviewed in the past four years. We are required to review policies at least once every five years. When there is a change in in code, we we get a recommendation from VSBA, we we make those changes. So, we have, you know, quite a few policies that have been updated during the course of the last four years, and then we have a group of policies that have not been reviewed by the board during the last four years. So, beginning with this month and on into most, I expect, most of next year, we'll be bringing forward to the board policies that will need to be reviewed. In some cases, there will be no recommended changes. In some cases, we may have recommending a minor adjustment based upon a recommendation from VSBA, or it might simply be a change in code reference. So, we've tried to to make it a little bit easier for the board to review that by putting a table into the document and then indicating whether or not there were any changes or not, or any of there were, what were the nature.
Sure. Mr. Kader, sure.
Dr. Benson, it was very easy for me to see the changes as they were highlighted in, you know, they were they were green and they were highlighted. Is the public able to see this in the same way? How does the public?
Yeah, I have to check on that. We we are using the board board docs itself to do the editing in here, and there's an efficiency to doing that in terms of when the board then makes the decision and it moves right into into policy. The old methodology that we were using required us to take the policy out, put it into Word, and use the the strikeout feature of of Word. So, I will I will look into that, and and we do want to make sure that that folks can see what the recommended, what the recommended changes are.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions or comments?
I do.
Okay.
So, the only, I looked through all of them, and the only one that I wanted to bring to the attention of the board was the superintendent's, superintendents, the school board policy, da-da, the one you just talked to, electronic meetings. I'm trying to forget the number of it. 1108, and meetings of the school board. So, in the order of efficiency, we, the board, as I remember, we were enduring very, very long meetings with, we had a hot issue, and we were here till 11 o'clock at night, and we had discussions. How do we streamline the meeting? And one of the ways we streamlined the meeting was that for the meetings of the board, the business meetings, we cut out board member comments. And, you know, I feel that this is our board meeting, and if we have, we should, you know, our constituents have elected us to sit here. If we have comments in our board meeting, then we should have comments in our board meeting. I think we could all agree that we'll keep them short, but sometimes maybe your constituents won't want you to keep them short, and you, and want you to address that immediately. And the superintendent's comments are left in on that board meeting, so, you know, it's important enough for him to say something, but it's not important enough for the elected members to say something during the meeting. And so, I am asking the board, can we either insert back the board member comments into this policy, or at least take out superintendent's comments? If you don't want to do that, then at least take out the superintendent's comments as well, and we'll get moving. And then we will be streamlined. But I I support putting board member comments back in. And I'd say, he doesn't say anything anyway, but
I was going to say, Dr. Benson speaks less time than we do.
I know. It sends a message, though. I mean
Well, it was, this was voted on
It was voted on.
So, I think, then let's put it back on the retreat for people to talk about.
I think it's fine the way it is. If it's not broken, fix it.
I think let's, let's, I would say, let's not vote on it right now. I'd say, let's do this at, you know, a retreat or something, because we have board member comments in December because it's only one meeting.
Right.
So, so it will be covered for December.
Right.
And assuming that the board wants to meet again in January to retreat, I think that's where we voted on it, and that's why we came up with it.
I just find it funny that we're censoring ourselves on our own policy.
Well, it was a 7-0 vote, from what I remember.
And it was a different time, and it was a different time, and it was, there was different issues going on, but
Okay. I'm, I'm just, so, I would say, because we can always come back and quickly amendments should there be a change. And if you want, I guess we could hold this one when bringing these, we could put all of them on consent, and if you want, we could pull 1108. How about that one for next meeting? Does that make any sense for the board? Gives an opportunity to talk about it? That's the only way I can think of
It's up to them.
Well, since we're going to have two new board members, and that's almost one-third of the board, I think it's something we should discuss when the new board members are
Correct. That's why I was saying to pull 1108.
Well, it doesn't matter if we approve it. We can always pull it back and reapprove it. I mean, if we if we decide to leave it as is in the future, then we'd have to put it on to approve it. So, if we approve it now, we can always bring it back and
Right.
and change it.
Right. Right.
Makes sense to me.
Yep.
Okay. I was just going to say, we could bring all of them except that one for the next one, but I will bring them all.
Bring them all, I'm okay with it. You know, I just want to, I want to get the, I want to get, I want the new members to weigh in and
Yeah. Okay. Nope, that makes sense.
Get a, get a pulse.
All right. My plan would be to put that on consent, but, okay, because it didn't seem, okay. All right. Moving on to 1403. This item was, is being brought by Ms. Egan and myself. At the board retreat this, in August, we brought forth, or I shared with the board, some information about Fairfax County's longstanding, and I, when I say longstanding, based on the name, it was called the Minority Student Achievement and Oversight Committee. It was, it was brought to the board for us just to talk about whether such a committee or something like that would be appropriate in Stafford County. We talked about it in August. At the time, there didn't seem that there was some impetus at that time to move in that direction. It seems like since then, there may have been some changes. I just saw recently that Henrico County, actually on, I think, Monday night, has, have created an Equity and Diversity Task Force, which is comprised of students, parents, staff, and community members to begin to talk about these types of issues. And I think, again, this is a good time to bring up whether, again, there is maybe some interest into looking into something like that. I think a task force, other than a committee, most of you know what I think about the word committee many times, that just for us to begin to look at our diverse student population, we can certainly talk about it, again, at a retreat, but I just wanted to go ahead and get this out there. Ms. Egan, I thought it was a good time to bring
Well, yeah, and I and I also think that, you know, this should be, this should not be a school board committee. This should be, I would assume that the superintendent would lead, lead this. Based on some of the feedback we've gotten from public comment, friends at the NAACP have gotten up here and spoken about diversity in our schools, and teaching staff, and things like that, I think this is, this is a perfect opportunity to bring in members of the community under Dr. Benson's leadership and and start having those conversations and start, you know, moving towards a more diverse, unified school division. So, I'm looking forward to supporting it.
So, I mean, if there's comments or concerns of where to go, sure, Ms. Kader, sorry.
I'm being vocal tonight. I'm really happy to see this, first of all. I'm being vocal tonight. I'm really happy to see this, first of all. I love the way that it's set up. When I scroll down and I look at the community representatives and I see, you know, all the various people represented, including students, I think that's really, really important. And I'm just, I'm really looking forward to supporting this, learning more about it, getting it going. And more importantly, not waiting, with things like this and other things that come before us, not waiting until there's a, there's an outcry for it. Being proactive with something like this is just, is just, I commend those of you that, that brought it. I know that I've met with quite a few parents who are not here tonight, but I certainly hope they're watching. I hope they see that this is up for information and, and I would really ask for the support of the board to push this through because I think it's a great effort to get some education on, on diversity and student achievement in our, in our schools, for our educators, for our students. And, and I think this is a great thing. I'm happy to see it.
I think the timing of this is really good to go with the reports we've gotten on our, our signature programs because I think we've seen that we've, we've got these accelerated programs, but that, you know, we don't have a lot of diversity among the, the population there. And part of the, you know, issues that we've discussed, maybe they're not aware of the programs, but I, I certainly like that to be one of the, the charges of this committee, to see how we make sure that all of our programs are, you know, made known among the entire population. Because we talked about that specifically when the reports came to us. And this would be a good avenue perhaps to, you know, get that war down.
So, any other comments? No? All right, then we can bring that back. If there are suggestions or charges, please send comments to Missy. We can try and bring something back at least at our next meeting. So, okay, 1404, we're getting there. Discussing future meetings regarding program reviews and training. We had initially set, the board had determined December 16th to meet around program review. I think we all have not only looked at our calendars and everything else, but with the addition of the two new board members, we would like to make sure that that's part of our discussion, for them to be involved in that because I think that will be a big day. I have also suggested that we probably would like to get some training for our board on FOIA, other sort of issues like that, that there's been a lot of change in the last year about devices, how FOIA and Sunshine, all that works. I think a briefing for our board, not super long, but I think it's important. I think that's actually part of our training as members is to know that, that stuff. Sometimes we do a retreat or, I would call it more a planning and, you know, some kind of planning session, maybe planning and training session at the beginning of the year. So with that, is there any indications on preferences? I got the impression the 16th, we can cancel. Is that, yes? I'm seeing nods.
Yes.
Okay. Then what type of dates? And if we want to throw out some, we can also have our clerk send that out to everybody involved of what type of, type of day or meeting. What, what are people's preference? Remember, we will start into budget right in the beginning of, of January as well. But it seems like we've identified several things that we want to discuss.
So we already had a tentative date for our retreat in January, correct?
I don't know if there was.
I have it on my calendar. And it's in pen, not pencil, so I'm pretty sure I got an invite to it. But that, that doesn't matter. My, my question is, I, I had written down a tentative date of, of Saturday, the 16th at 9:00 AM for a work session, I don't know. Oh, that's December 16th. That's the one we just canceled. Gotcha. My calendar doesn't go into January, so. That's neither here nor there. The question is, if, if we were to plan a, that for January, can, can we combine all of that? Is everyone?
Yeah, what's the preference?
Open to just knocking it all out in one Saturday?
There's that. We have a couple budget meetings, I believe, in January on Tuesdays. That's why it's hard to put a lot of them in front of from what I have seen. So is there a preference?
What did we do last year? Didn't we do something at the end of like January and we just, we just knocked everything out in one day, one Saturday?
Yeah, it was a long day.
Yeah. That works for me. I'd rather just get it all done than have to stay around here till, you know, 11 o'clock at night, several nights in a month.
Or contribute several Saturdays to hearing various bits and pieces.
Right, right.
Yes.
As much as we can squeeze in in one day. This way, you know, because staff usually comes and we don't want to take up all their time either.
Why don't we have Missy send out dates that will include our two board members of a couple preferences for Saturdays, a personal one. I know sometimes people pick like the Friday night and a, a Saturday morning. I will say that's not my preference because of basketball season, but I will, I will, I will give up one game for you all on a Friday night. But I want to be a senior parent for, for a little bit of this year. So, but I am open to that if that's a preference. I will try and pick an away game and.
I would like to try to avoid the holiday weekend.
I would too. I was thinking maybe the 20th or 27th would be the ones for us to make that.
Yeah, that'd work.
For, for me, Friday too, is, I'm a senior parent. I'm a swimmer and Friday night, they have swim meets.
Yeah, okay.
That's not good for me either, but just.
I thought I would be up front too.
I'm just letting you know, it's.
Why don't we throw out the 20th and the 27th? Watch your emails for Missy. She will be our scheduler to see what, which is.
It's painless.
Because it's January, we probably ought to have a backup date.
Backup date.
Because.
Snow date.
Yeah, it happens.
Exactly. All right, thank you all very much. We will, I'm going to announce the next meetings, but remember, we still have a continuation of closed session, which we had already read into.
It was your suggestion.
So I don't, I think we'll be okay. So our next school board meeting will be on December 12th. There is a oversight committee on Monday night. There is also a presentation at the Board of Supervisors of the five-year finance plan on Tuesday as well. I believe we can certainly go to observe. Other than that, oh no, we're not adjourned. We are in closed session, sorry.